Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 22 meeting of the County Commission. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the black folder. And you can contact Ken in the front row if you need a listening device.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the County Commission minutes of April 15, 2014.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any additions or comments?
Pay the bills. Oh, sorry.
Oh. All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll look at the bills.
I'm not gonna say anything.
Item three. Our bills to be paid in the amount of $356,426.75.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The Register of Deed Official Report of Fees Collected During March 2013-14 was received and placed on file in the Auditor's Office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I'll move routine actions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve routine actions. All those in favor. Any comments for Carrie? I don't know if Carrie's here. Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our new JDC Director. Jamie Gravitt is here today. Does she just wanna come up and say good morning, Jamie? We just started yesterday.
Good morning.
Good morning. And also to thank Lynn Crowell. She has been the acting director since January. And we thank you for what you've done and just kept things moving smoothly. And now she'll be helping Jamie readjust to his new job. So, thank you. And thanks for coming, Jamie. Thanks, Lynn.
Item six are application for abatement that will be presented by Kyle Helsa and Pam Nelson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helsa, Director of Equalization. We bring before you this morning two requests for abatements. The first coming from Violet Turbine, decal number 919, in 2013 property taxes in the amount of $11.61. This is for a mobile home that was removed.
Need for a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve decal number 919. All those in favor, oh, comment?
Kyle, people are supposed to get a permit before they move them even if they're destroyed, aren't they?
That I don't know. They didn't move them, they destroyed it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
I don't know.
I have a motion and a second for 919. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. McFarland, did you have a comment? Okay. Okay, the next one. Sorry.
The second one is for John R. Schultz, record ID 54300, for 2013 property taxes in the amount of $1,030.18. This is the difference between the owner occupied and the non-owner occupied.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the owner occupied, RDID 54300. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Pam Nelson. I have six elderly assessment freezes today. We have record ID 322033 for $434. We have record ID, um, let's see, record ID 12095 for $1,097.71. We have record ID 28004 for $726.80. We had record ID 45019 for $15.14. Record ID 46221 for $17.47. And record ID 46903 for $727.75.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items C through H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven are notices and requests. A notice from the Sioux Falls JCs of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle as part of the annual Fourth of July fireworks celebration has been received, and that is on file in the Auditor's Office.
I think Travis wanted to say a few words this morning about the Fourth of July celebration. Morning, Travis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As always, we've tried to come up with creative funding. Grand Falls Casino has stepped up again. And that will start soon. Another item that we've come up with is a raffle. And my co-chair, John, will talk about that.
Good morning, John. Could you just identify yourself and your address, please?
My what's that?
Your address, your name and your address, for the record.
My name is John Small. I don't know my address. How sad is that? I can drive there. I'll give you my, we just moved into Sioux Falls. It's the end one. 401 East 8th Street is the address at my office. And that's downtown. I just admitted I don't know my own address. They're gonna take me real serious now. Last year, we got, my wife and I on Sunny Radio, we got involved with the Fourth of July fireworks just like a week or maybe two weeks before the event. Really excited to be more involved this year. We, as I was looking at some of the things that they had done for funding in the past, I saw they had a 50-50 raffle. And an event that's about a $28,000, $30,000 event overall. I was amazed that the 50-50 raffle brought in $168. I said, "Well, I think we can do better than that." So, I looked at that as an area for improvement. And one of the things that we can do to improve that area is instead of starting the raffle right before the fireworks, you know, the night of the event, I said, "Let's do a raffle that starts a whole lot sooner so we can sell tickets in advance and have it where you don't even need to be present." You know, I know there are people who can't make it to the fireworks on the Fourth of July, but they would certainly love to contribute to make, you know, this wonderful event for our community. Even if I can't make it, I know other people do. And if there's an opportunity to win a nice prize, and I reached out to Rue's TV and Appliance, and we're gonna have, I have to look, 'cause I'm, all this technical stuff, I don't, it's a 55-inch LG television. So, it's gonna be a nice, he said, "You can go bigger than that, but then you limit who can win it, 'cause not everybody has room for a giant TV." But, the idea is, if we have 5,000 tickets at $5 apiece, that's $25,000. Now, I have no idea if we'll sell all of those tickets, but that would certainly be a good goal. And if we can, you know, have this as an annual thing that we do each year, I see this as a really good way to put the fireworks funding in place, not just for one year, but hopefully for years to come. And a huge thank you to the sponsors that step up every year. But I wanna try to lift the burden, instead of having a few people dig really deep into their pockets. If we can get, you know, 5,000 people to do a little bit, I think that's gonna make a huge difference. So, are there any questions on the raffle, or are there?
How are you gonna go about advertising? Are you gonna advertise on Sunny Radio?
Yeah, yeah, we'll certainly do that. And I use this thing called the Internet, too. There are people on there that maybe don't even listen to the radio, but they certainly utilize the Internet. So, we'll be promoting it online and at events. You'll see it all over the place, so.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Any questions for John or Travis? Thank you for stepping up and volunteering. Thanks, Travis.
Item eight are planning and zoning notices, and we have none today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO 38110, in the amount of $18,771.37. The Auditor's Office received this request for compromise by the applicant. There's no real estate associated with this particular request. However, he does claim that he first became aware of the lien when he was exploring the possibility of purchasing a home with another person. He now has dropped that attempt to try to purchase another home. However, the lien against the applicant is in the amount of $18,771.37. It's primarily for hospital and medical services, with a small amount of it being public defender services. The lien's date from 1997 through 1999. There is no payment history on this particular lien account. The applicant currently is on Social Security supplemental income disability. He gets $742 per month. The applicant has not filed an income tax return ever, since he primarily gets his income through disability payments. In 1999, the reason he hasn't actually had any employment was due to the fact that he suffers from epilepsy. The applicant lists assets of approximately $6,380. And that is part ownership in the 2007 Saturn. And he has liabilities of $43,771, consisting of the county aid lien and a judgment of $25,000 from Green Tree. It is, our understanding, he currently lives with his girlfriend. He's requesting a compromise of the lien with no payment. Yes, the Commission recognizes limited ability to pay due to Social Security monthly income. And just for your information, the fact that he's on disability basically makes him judgment-proof. We could go and try to garnish, but, or, you know, do anything we could to try to levy on this, but the reality is that he's beyond attachment, because you can't attach or garnish Social Security income. So, I'll tell you what, I will float a motion, I don't know if I'll get a second, but I'll float a motion for half of what is owed. I don't know if we'll get a second, but.
I would second that.
I have a motion for half of the amount.
Question, why, I don't understand why the hospital can't eat a half of this. It's a $17,000 bill, it's the bulk, 17,600 is the bulk of this thing.
That's what the hospital got paid. I mean, they've already been paid back in 1999. This is our payment on this client's behalf to the hospital.
Oh, these are our costs.
So, they've already been paid.
And to tell you a little bit about how this goes through the process, under our statutes, we are obligated for certain people who are indigent to pay those bills. Once those bills are paid, we place a lien on the person and property, if any, of that person. And so, I would read this as, since there was that lien put on there, that we were obligated under the law to pay that bill to the hospital back in 1997. And so, that's why the lien is on there. So, there are definite criteria that we follow, whether we're liable for that or not, under statute.
Madam Chair. But Kirsten, wouldn't it also be true that it was likely a greatly discounted bill that we paid at that time? I mean, 17,000 was probably not the full and true bill. It probably was an $80,000 bill or something like that, and we paid 17.
Our poor relief chapter says the lesser of what's called a DRG rate, or the Medicare rate, is paid to the hospital. So, it definitely isn't a full billing amount. There are some formulas that are used in the law to calculate that.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Barr?
I'm not going to support the motion. I, the fact that the party currently cannot pay us doesn't mean he never will. And the fact that we can't collect from him doesn't mean he's going to be harmed in any way by keeping this lien against him. So, the status quo is not injuring him unless he wants to buy some property or inherits a whole bunch or something. And so, I don't see any reason to change it from where it is currently.
Commissioner Kelly?
Don't we have a policy of writing off? Ken, maybe you could brief us on what we do with these liens after 20 years?
This may, this is a ways away from, I think, discharge under our current policy. I mean, we have a, I think it's a 30-year window, and that's kind of also consistent with some intent of state law when they've made an adjustment on 30 years. So, we've got a little bit ways to go on that, to meet that criteria.
I was thinking it was 20.
Yeah, and then it's below the, it's already below the dollar value threshold that we've established as well, so.
Commissioner Bennega?
I'm still a little confused about the fact that he tried to buy a house with his girlfriend, and obviously didn't make that happen, but he's attempting to purchase a home, but still not able to pay us anything. Is that what I'm assuming?
Yes.
That's his argument. Yes.
We don't have a second on the motion on the table for half payments? I thought Commissioner did. Okay. I wasn't sure about that either. My comment is basically the same as Commissioner Barr says, that there's no real estate attached to this at this point. And the other thing is, is there has been no attempt whatsoever in the last almost 15, 16 years to make any payments, not even $5 a month or $5 a year, where we have people who come in here who have diligently tried to pay their bills, even if it is just a few dollars. And I think we've always recognized in the past the importance of your due diligence to at least try to pay your liens. So, I won't be supporting it. Are there any other comments? I think we better do a roll call vote. This is for a motion for a payment for half, which would be $9,385.69.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennega?
No.
Barth?
No.
Hiberger?
No. Motion fails 3-2, and so, we'll stay the way it is.
The next is on a recommendation from Haugian Associates for a compromise of lien. This is actually deferred from last week, which was a 2-2 vote. This is on DPNO number 15274, in the amount of $1,304.68. Last week, we received a request to go ahead and compromise a lien in the amount of $500, which would have been 38% within the next 15 days. The recommendation comes from Haugian Associates, which is our collection agency that handles our liens. The applicant has a strong payment history. This lien had a balance at one time as high as $3,764.68. However, through a large, consistent payment history, the applicant has been able to work the lien down to the present balance of $1,304.68. The applicant is on Social Security with limited funds. He would like to pay off the balance with a lump sum of $500, due to the fact that he has a limited ability to pay due to his Social Security income. Our collection agency recommends that we accept this particular offer of compromise. Once again, just to bring everybody up to speed, last week, this was a 2-2 vote, and the Commission actually wasn't fully staffed. We had, now we are fully staffed, and so ultimately, we can actually reconsider this today. The applicant receives $990 per month in Social Security income. And of course, there's a Social Security award letter that's been attached with the information that was submitted for review. And then also, due to the low monthly payments, the applicant is not required to file any income tax, and there isn't any 2013 income tax for us to review, because he's been on Social Security since 1994. His last job was approximately two years ago, as a part-time driver for an auto parts store. He's been unemployed since that time due to an automobile accident. So, once again, I will make a motion for the $500, which would be 38%, to go ahead and to release the lien in full.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for, to release a lien with a payment of $500. Are there any comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just comment that this party has made over 100 individual payments over the years. Not very much money, sometimes $20, but has pretty much shown good faith about the whole thing, and now is trying to get over it. And I think they deserve a lot of credit for what they've done in the past.
I am gonna support this. You know, if I might, just to kind of rough math here, I think he's paid over about $2,400 in the last, how many years, on his Social Security income. This person cares about what his bills were and took the responsibility to try to pay them off, even on his limited amount of income that he was getting. And I didn't ask what the last one, but is the applicant here? I do have a motion and a second to accept the compromise with a payment of $500.
I think we're gonna need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, and I'm not gonna support it simply because it's almost all public defender and public advocate costs. I think he can continue the payments, as far as I'm concerned. There's no rest of judgment, but maybe the, our collection company wants to get rid of it, I don't know. But I will not be supporting it.
I think at the cost of $990 a month, it's pretty hard to live on that anymore if he's living by himself. Any other comments? Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hiberger?
Yes. Motion passes 4 to 1. Compromise for $500.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time for the public to step forward and say anything that is not on the agenda. If you want to speak now. Okay, we have one. Good morning, Mr. Boothby.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. Briefly here, last week, Minnehaha County Highway Department was awarded three awards by the South Dakota Engineering Society, and just wanted to let you know of the awards. It was for the innovative and expedited analysis, design, and construction of the Baltic Bridge. We won the, SDES is what the organization's name is, the SDES 2013 Outstanding Engineering Achievement Award. That was for the entire state. The 2013 Outstanding Achievement Award for the Eastern Chapter of the organization, and also what we call the 2000, or what they call the 2013 People's Choice Award. During Engineers Week, which is in February, several projects are posted at the Washington Pavilion, and people get to view the different project displays and then vote on what they think is the most innovative engineering project. And the Baltic Bridge was the one that won that, so.
Congratulations. Thank you for sharing. That's fantastic.
Tell your staff, great job.
Yeah. That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wants to comment, a public comment?
Madam Chair, I just would want to say about the Baltic Bridge project really was amazing. The relief for that community getting it open was palatable, palatable, palatable for those of us that were present. And our highway department clearly is the best in the state.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on.
Regular business. There is a public hearing at 9:00 AM to consider an application for a special on-sale wine retailer's and special off-sale packaged wine dealer's license for the Sulan Renaissance Association, for the Renaissance Festival to be held June 7th and 8th, 2014, at the W. H. Lyons Fairgrounds. And Lady Catherine is here from the Renaissance Association to answer any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning, fair, sir, and lady.
You want to identify yourself and give your address, please? She probably knows it.
I am Lady Catherine Davanay, Countess of Bridgewater, of the Sulan Renaissance Association here in Sioux Falls. And in normal life, I'm Valerie G. Yakey Leeds. And I'm at 4108 Yeshellin here in Sioux Falls. And what I am here to do is to ask a boon of thee to allow us to serve wine and weed at our fest. Since your fairground already serves beer and ale, we would just like to supplement that for those of us who are not into beer and ale, but would like our wine and weed. And our wine is given to us by a wonderful vineyard over in Garrettson by the name of Tucker's Wharf. So, even that comes from good Minnehaha County.
Any questions? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak opposed to this liquor license? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
So moved.
Second. I hope it's good weather.
I have a motion and a second for good weather.
Well, the advantage of the fairgrounds is that we do have our jousting indoors. We do have a number of our vendors indoors. And most of our stages are either already covered, or we cover the audience. So, rain or shine, you're going to stay dry.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the liquor license for June 7th and 8th. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Gramercy.
Item number 11 is a reading and issuance of a proclamation recognizing Building Safety Month in Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Well, Scott is gone, and David is otherwise occupied in the back room right now. But this is a proclamation that the Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning has asked to be brought forward, and that regarding Building Safety Month in Minnehaha County for the month of May. And that, and this is as a result of some of the efforts that our planning department engages in with their building inspector. If you'd like, I'd be happy to read the proclamation. Otherwise, if you are familiar with it, we're just asking that the Commission concur and issue the proclamation recognizing the month of May as Building Safety Month in Minnehaha County.
What's your pleasure? Do you want to approve it, or you want him to read it?
Approve it. That's my motion.
I'll second. It's rather long.
Yes, it is. It's rather long. I have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for the Building Safety Month. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Ken, if you want to read it, it's in the end book by Dick. Okay.
Item 12 is Consider a Resolution for Placement of County Highway 148 Railroad Crossing Project on the South Dakota Department of Transportation Railroad Crossing Improvement Program. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioner, or, good morning again, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. A little bit of a background for this request. Last month, I believe it was, I received an email or a call from Cindy, and she wanted to know some information about conditional use permit that was approved in 2011 for the Fremar elevator near Lyons. And there were some items that were part of that approval that appeared not to have been completed at this time. In particular, the railroad crossing on County Highway 118, which is the east-west road just north of Lyons. And so, I started to look into that. And DOT administers a program. The program is called the Railroad Crossing Improvement Program, and it's a federally-funded program where the applicant, which is typically a municipality or a government agency, pays 10% of a project cost to perform improvements on railroad crossings. And those improvements can range anywhere from actually closing the railroad crossing to constructing an overpass in some highly populated areas. The program in South Dakota is a pretty successful program. They have a lot of funding, and that funding has continued through MAP-21. And so, there is money available for Minnehaha County to participate. As far as this specific project, I received information on the CUP from Scott Anderson, and I'll read you what is actually stated in the CUP. It was also, this was in the approval that occurred in 2011. "The railroad spur crossing County Highway 118 shall be a concrete crossing. Any adjustment of County Highway 118 shall be approved by the County Highway Department prior to the construction of the crossing. Any region of the highway which has been disturbed in the construction shall have its surface replaced to a minimum of nine inches of compacted gravel and three inches of asphalt at the applicant's expense." Additionally, we looked at, or it was looked at to add the crossing arms and lights and beacon. And in 2011, Fremar was notified that Minnehaha County would pick up the expenses for this project. And my guess, not having anybody in the department that's familiar with that, my guess is that because of the way that that program operates with the 10% match from a government agency, that that was the reason that they were notified as such. And so, the program requirements require the governing board of an agency to make official requests to the State Department of Transportation to participate in a program. And this is done by resolution. And so, there has been a resolution prepared for your authorization that requests participation in the program. And once the request has been received, it will be programmed in the state STIP, is what they call the. they call the Transportation Improvement Program. I've been told verbally that likely the project could be programmed as early as next year for construction, and that the approximate cost would be $290,000 total. And I was told that that project cost is probably estimated on the high side. And so 10% of that cost would be roughly $29,000 that Minnehaha County would be responsible for. That includes both the pedestals that have the crossing arm that comes down, the beacons, and also a concrete panels to replace the current wood panels that are on the rail that crosses the pavement. And so, project is estimated to cost $29,000 for the county. It will likely be less than that, but we won't know until the project is completed. So at this time, do you guys have any questions that I can answer about the program or the request?
I just have a couple of comments too to fill in. When we did this project last year, or a few years ago, it was with our past highway superintendent, and I think things kind of got lost in the shuffle. The people in that area had been told, because it used to be a gravel road that we really didn't use at all because there was a curve. We took the curve out. Now the railroad tracks covers two different places, two different highways. And that's on the way, on the way to school for a lot of kids. And so it had been told at that time that that other crossing would be completed just because the amount of traffic we have on that for our school kids and just...
I'd make a motion to have the chair sign this resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second to sign the resolution. Are there any other comments?
I got a question. D.J., I'm the, I guess I can't really tell from the video, from the aerial here. There's another crossing, isn't there?
There is a crossing on 118, and then our county highway 143, which is the north-south road which runs through Lyons.
Is that, have we got the same problem at that crossing, or is this the, is the east-west the most important?
There's two different improvements that can be made at a railroad intersection in these rural cases. One is the pedestal that has the arm that comes down when a train comes. And then the other improvement is the concrete pavement that is installed in between the railroad tracks. And so the north-south road, that county highway 143, the pedestals with the arms have been installed. However, the concrete pavement panels have not been installed.
Oh, so there are arms on the, on the north-south?
Yes.
Oh, so it's just the east-west that we did not, okay.
Right. And so, and so this request is asking for both the pedestals and the concrete panels for the east-west road. And then I also plan on making a comment after this, that we would also like to pursue installing the concrete panels as a separate request in future weeks on the north-south road.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the chairman to sign the resolution for approving the railroad tracks intersection. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, D.J.
Item 13, Consider a Resolution to Delete Bridge Structures 50-144-200, .05 miles south and .6 miles west of Ellis, and 50-312-010, 9.7 miles east and .5 miles north of Del Rapids from the National Bridge Inventory System. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioners, both of these bridges lied on township roads and were closed several years ago. They were both removed in 2012. And if you remember, last year, there was, I take that back, I'm sorry, 50-312-010, which is the northeast part of the county, that structure was removed in 2012. The structure 50-144-200, which is near Ellis, that structure was removed prior to my starting here, and I'm not sure of the date on that. If you remember, about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, in the Argus Leader, there was an article about a truck, pickup truck that was stolen. And the gentleman or the person that stole it managed to ramp off of an abutment and somehow land his pickup on a bridge pit, bent, and in between the bent and the abutment. The picture, I think, was on the front page of the Argus Leader. That was the structure here near Ellis. I don't know that that person was ever caught, but the structure has been removed. And so this request is to remove both structures off the NBIS system because we do not have any intentions on replacing those structures.
Any other questions for D.J.? Look for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second to delete some bridges off of our inventory. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group in the amount of $48,145 for construction administration for Project MC 253-460BR-14, the replacement of two bridge structures, 50-060-089 and 50-063-090. D.J. Boothby.
Two weeks ago, we had an authorization for a bid award for prompt construction on these structures. These are the two on the gravel road in Grand Meadow Township northwest of Hartford. And so we have successfully negotiated a contract price and contract with IDG for the construction administration. And so we just asked for your approval for the construction admin contract.
Any questions for D.J.? Look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the construction administration for Project MC 253-460BR-14. All those in favor?
Is this my favorite bridge?
Yes.
This is your favorite bridge. Commissioner Kelly.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item 15 is to authorize the Sheriff's Department to submit a grant application to the 2014 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, SCAAP. Kristen Trana.
Good morning, Kristen Trana with the Sheriff's Office. This has become a very routine annual request that I have of you. I request that we would be able to submit an application for this gap, is what we call it, the gap program. Briefly, this gap program provides funds to states and localities because of incurred costs for detaining individuals whom the Department of Justice and the Department of Homeland Security believe to be criminal aliens based on investigative and other information. So it's to assist us financially with those that are believed to be here under illegal circumstances. The funding has been going down, but it's still a very good program to be a part of. So last year, we received $34,073. The federal funding has been going down, but we would like to be able to apply for it again this year.
Any questions for Kristen? I have a motion.
I'll make that. Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the submission of the grant application. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16 is to authorize the Sheriff's Department to submit an application to the 2014 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Program. Kristen Trana.
Good morning. I would also like to request authorization to apply for the BVP grant. This grant is also very much decreasing, but I would like to go ahead and submit an application again this year. Last year, we did not receive any funding. They are, they have been allocating that funding to smaller counties, smaller jurisdictions in order to be able to provide them with vests. But I would still like to submit an application to see if we could get any funding this year.
Okay. Any questions? Look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the application for the Bulletproof Vest Program. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Want more, Kristen?
Item 17, Authorize the Sheriff's Department to Submit an Application for the 2014 Highway Safety Grant Program. Kristen Trana.
I come to you requesting authorization for the Federal Fiscal Year 2015 Highway Safety Program Grants. This is a grant that we have been able to use in the past to fund some of the overtime associated with special events during the summertime, as well as holiday saturations and holiday checkpoints in order to maintain more highway safety. Additionally, this is a great equipment grant for us that we're able to get radar systems on an 80/20 match, which means that we only have to pay for 20% of those as long as it's awarded through the grant. And we would hope to purchase five systems for our vehicles. Additionally, while the match is not nearly as generous, it's still helpful that we would like to replace the PVTs in vehicles. And so we would like to request that through the grant as well.
Any questions on this grant?
Move approval of that grant.
I have a motion and a second to approve the application for the 2014 Highway Safety Grant. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor say aye. If those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Item 18, Consider a Motion to Approve Amendment to the Minnehaha County Grants Policy for Suspension and Debarment Procedures as It Relates to Purchases Made Through Federal Grant Programs. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, we were recently made aware by some correspondents that came to us from FEMA as it relates to the ice storm and some of the cleanup that we had, and the funds that we received from that. One of the, one of the requirements that they pointed out in those documents was that the county needed to have what's called a debarment and suspension policy and procedures within our grants. And basically what this is, this is a federal grant requirement that simply says that any grant or contract using federal funds that's above $25,000 were prohibited from using contractors or companies that are on the suspension and debarment list, and prohibited from doing business with, with the federal government and using those funds. And so what we've done is to be, and they have asked for a copy of our policy that outlines that. Trouble is, we didn't have one, and that within our own policy. So we've taken our grants policy that currently exists, and you will see at the very end, we've added a section that's called Suspension and Debarment Procedures. And basically what we're asking you to approve is that language that's underlined there, and I'll go ahead and read it. Says, "For projects receiving federal grant funds, the grantee is prohibited by federal regulation from issuing contracts or making purchases from vendors listed on the General Services Administration's List of Parties excluded from federal procurement programs. Minnehaha County will not knowingly form a new contract, make a new purchase from, or enter into any business relationship with any individual or business entity that is listed by a federal agency as debarred, suspended, or proposed for debarment. Prior to entering into any contract to purchase, for purchases funded by federal grants expected to exceed or equal $25,000, a search will be performed by the department administering the grant using the Excluded Parties List System, EPLS, website at httpw.sam.gov. The search will be documented with the print screen of the search results. A copy of the print screen will be attached to any contract or invoice meeting the requirements set forth above." So that is the policy or the new language we'd like to insert with our grants, under our grants policy. I have talked with those departments that deal with this on a fairly regular basis. You know, the Sheriff's Department, the auditors, emergency management, and all of them have access to this www.sam.gov and their corresponding secret code to get into it to check to see that list. So this should not be any imposition on us at all to make this as part of our procedures.
Any other questions for Ken? Comments?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it reluctantly, and I do have a comment.
Motion and a second.
You know, I'm really disappointed that there's a policy and procedure, you know, the Sunshine Act requires transparency in government. Why do you have to have a secret code to find out who the federal government doesn't like to do business with?
I'm just simply saying, you know, yes, our people have a code in order to do that.
I understand, but, but you know, it's really disconcerting, and it's hard for South Dakota and other small states. We have a limited number of vendors. What happens if somebody's on that particular list and we don't have the secret code to find out? And what happens? What bureaucrat put them on that code? I don't know, but you know what? I didn't elect any of those bureaucrats in Washington, D.C. And I certainly don't necessarily have the requisite trust level to find out if they gave due diligence or the right amount of consideration for the South Dakotans that may or may not be on that list. Because lord knows, we never have any screw-ups in government.
And perhaps, quote, "secret code" is a little bit flippant on my part, and I shouldn't have used that language. It's simply, but yes, in order to access a number of these websites and to get information, and that there's a password and a code in order to look at those information, and our departments that deal regularly with that do have access to that. And the reason I reference that, Commissioner, is simply we had another commissioner who had asked, what is the procedures? I tried to do it. I couldn't get in because it was asking for, you know, the password and code. And our departments that deal with that do have that information. And have access.
I have another comment. You know, we act under FEMA regulations. We act as the pass-through authority related to emergency grants for the city of Sioux Falls and other municipalities. What liability do we have regarding the fact that we're a pass-through? For example, the city of Sioux Falls with the cleanup related to last year's ice storm. You know, we were the conduit for that, and we're subject to legislative audit for that review for any of the funds that comes through related to FEMA regs. And I guess the question is, how much liability do we have related to what the city may or may not engage in? Because we do have a requirement for that.
We didn't act as any pass-through for the city funds for FEMA. We just simply acted as the funds that we received through our own administrative purposes.
Okay.
So we didn't, we didn't serve in that capacity for the city.
But we did have to authorize their emergency command center to get hold of it.
We didn't. I mean, when you declare an emergency for the area, that power rests solely with the county commission in order to do that, in order to start accessing that network. Absolutely.
And I do remember seeing the regs requiring us to be subjected to legislative audit for any funds that were received. I do recall reading that as well.
Commissioner Benega?
Well, unfortunately, I'm very familiar with this because as a part of a nonprofit, we have to do the same thing. And the code is not...
It's not a secret code.
It's an assigned code that you're not supposed to share with anybody. And you go through the vendor list, and it's not just South Dakota vendors, it's national vendors. So that's another issue. The other problem that you have is a person who has to deal with that is, just because you deal with someone who has a doing business as, sometimes finding the legal name is extremely difficult. So it's, I don't know what good, frankly, it does. But the real issue is, I'm kind of surprised that the auditors haven't found this before because this has been in place for three, four, or five years at least.
And this is, this is, like I said, this was the first time that we became aware of it through some correspondence, you know, as we are closing out the grants and things like that associated with the ice storm and some of the FEMA. And it was in a cover letter that we did, and Darlene and I and Rick and Bob talked about this, and figured this was the best way to meet that requirement, is to simply incorporate it to our existing grants policies and procedures that we have on the books already.
The biggest issue with this isn't so much the fact that you're doing the research. The big problem is, is you'll get a management letter from the auditing firm that says that you are not in compliance in your due diligence process. So even if nobody understands it, it's somewhat of a negative response to the way you do business. So you grin and bear it and move onward.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, all those federal monies come with all kinds of paperwork and red tape, and sometimes it doesn't make any sense on the ground here. I know that if, if the wrong person orders sandbags during a flood, it won't be reimbursed. The right person has to ask for it. I know that if you don't complete repairs on some infrastructure damage within six months, you're repaid at a lower rate, even though here we are where it's frozen solid for months and months. And I was a little disappointed when I read the title of this for a second time and saw it said "debarment" and not "disbarment."
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just remember, now, this probably keeps several hundred federal employees. We're helping the economy.
And it may keep some crooks from getting paid for jobs across the country, too.
The only thing I didn't like about it is that you couldn't see who was on there. So unless you have the code that our auditor's office, you don't even know if you're on the list. So I was looking for my name.
I'll give you my code, and you can look at it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the amendment to the Minnehaha County Grants Policy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 19 is Consider a Resolution to Declare Certain Abandoned Railroad Tax-Deed Property as Surplus Property and Authorize Issuance of a Quick Claim Deed. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, the county is, uh, the owner of record by virtue of an old tax deed of a piece of abandoned railroad property that's located in Ellis. And, uh, it abuts, um, property owners, a couple different property owners that have actually been making use of the property for several years. And that we've conducted, uh, staff, when we were approached by this, we've conducted extensive research on this, probably a month and a half's worth of work in that taking a look at this issue. And based upon the recommendation of, uh, staff and, uh, the state's attorney's office, we are going to recommend that this piece of property be declared as surplus and that, and that it be attached to the adjacent property owners as we've indicated in the resolution. That half of it would go to, excuse me, to DNW Industries. And the second half part of that property, the south half of it, would go to CHS, which is an elevator company there, and that, and upon payment of $6,540. In exchange for that, uh, that the owners of this adjacent property to this railroad right of way have agreed that they will take all the necessary action in order to put the property back on the tax rolls, including doing the plating, the surveying, and, and bearing the cost of doing the quiet title action that's going to be necessary and probably fairly extensive in order to clear title on this. So, we are asking you to approve the resolution just to allow us to declare that piece of property as surplus and to authorize the issuance of just a quick claim deed, uh, of our, of our interest to that property, uh, as we've indicated in the resolution. And, uh, this would also abate any and all taxes that may be payable, uh, prior to December 31st, 2014, which on the record right now, there are none.
I have a motion.
Do we need two, do we need to declare surplus first and then?
Yes, and the resolution does that.
Oh, the resolution does, okay.
If you pass the resolution, that declares it surplus, that authorizes the issuance of the quick claim deeds, and that, and, uh, gives the process of putting that property back on the tax rolls.
No, I'd move to adopt Resolution Number MC-14.
And I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution to declare certain abandoned railroad tax deed properties as surplus and authorize issuance of the quick claim deed. Any other comments or questions?
I guess I have a little one. I've read the article in the Argus Suter this last weekend about the state-owned railroads. They may want to check, see how they acquired title to that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item twenty is commission discussion and decision on procedure to be used to engage or retain agricultural service, architectural services for Minnehaha County correction facilities as per the recommendations of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, you will recall back on April 8th, you received a report from the Criminal Justice Review Committee on their recommendations regarding the anticipated jail bed needs and the future needs that the county has in that area, uh, for now into the next 20 years. And as you recall, uh, the number was quite staggering. It was, uh, almost an additional 400 beds than what we've got right now. And that the, the second part of that report is also has to do, of course, with replacing the existing beds that we have out at the Community Correction Center because that facility is quite frankly, uh, near the end of its useful life and is really no longer serving the purpose probably for which it was originally intended as a work release program, and is more being used for overflow, uh, purposes. And that, one of the main things that the committee, uh, wanted to do and recommended was that the commission engage the services of the architects to help develop the master plan, to do some preliminary design, and to take a look at some preliminary cost estimates associated with a number of different options that would phase in our building needs for the next several years, uh, and to meet those inmate bed responsibilities. Some of that included a remodel, potential remodel of the public safety building, uh, going up or out or both on the new jail, but to do it in a timely manner and in a, um, phase-in approach, uh, in regards to our, um, in recognition of our budget restraints that we have. And that, uh, so the commission, or the committee very much urged you to begin the work of retaining the architect to do that. Now, you have two ways that you can engage that service. You know, because it is a professional service, you may want to choose an option whereby you would pick an architect that you think, and just, and not go through an RFP process or whatever, but you could engage an architect, uh, to do that work for you and to establish those, uh, that timeline based upon their, their knowledge and experience with the current project or involvement in past work, you know, uh, of similar nature. And that, that might be a quicker way to get the things going, and that, but it is one of, an options you can choose. The other way, of course, is to go through the RFP process, to outline a set of requirements and to accept proposals from other firms in town that might be interested in doing that work. I will tell you, I mean, this project is generating a lot of interest in the community. And that, and I have had, you know, I've had a lot of phone calls from, uh, from business or from firms who are interested and have been inquiring about the status of the project and who are very, very much interested in, in doing some work. So, what you had asked for today was the opportunity to have that discussion, to figure out which way you would like to proceed. And that, um, I will share with you some additional information is that you will recall in 2013, you had allocated $100,000 to do work associated with, and to pay for work associated with this jail project. You only spent about $12,471 of that in 2013. So, if you want, you could do a supplement and do a post-notice hearing and that to supplement the 2014 budget with an amount representing the unspent balance of that $100,000 that you did last year. In addition, the 2014 building fund already has $50,000 in it for architectural work associated with building projects. So, um, there is some funds available in order to do this work. So, the main discussion for you today is, what process do you want to utilize? I can tell you, we're prepared to move quickly as staff on either option. And that, uh, as you know, I'm, we're going to be out for a little while, but I can promise you that, um, if you choose to go an RFP process, that'll be on your agenda next week. And that, um, in fact, I've already completed some groundwork on that, just getting ready to go. If you choose to hire someone directly, we can move on that rather quickly. So, don't let time be a consideration of what you want to do because staff can move quickly on either option.
Comments or questions for Ken? Commissioner?
Ken, how long does the, would typically the RFP process take between now and selection?
Sure. I will just tell you what I've, what I've kind of looked at and contemplated. If we had an RFP ready to go for next week, I think we could open, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cindy, but I think we could open on May 22nd, and that, that would be a Thursday. We could conduct interviews, you know, where the committee could conduct interviews of the firms and, and then, uh, we could be in a position based on that, those interviews, and bringing it back to the commission to recommend, uh, an award probably by June 17th.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bennigan.
Well, I guess, um, frankly, this project's going to take at least three years to get it completed, and that's just a guess. Um, a guess. I'm guessing, again, that there's going to be some bumps in the road that are going to take longer than we thought, or, and there's also going to be some processes that might be a little shorter, so, uh, one of the things that I want to make sure that we do is to have the ability to look at the variety of proposals out there that could be a solution because one of my issues when I look at this is the flexibility of the use of the facility because there's always a mixed issue of female and male, uh, residents that we need to address. And, um, one of the things that I would like to hear would be new ideas on how that could be addressed in the construction if we go that way, on how that need can be met. So, between the timeframe of getting it completed in maybe three years with some bumps and the flexibility of solutions, I think we need to use the RFP process.
And in the RFP that I've been working on, I mean, I have, I have made extensive reference and, and have made, and actually asked, asking people to view the full contents of the reports that we do have on file, and that, uh, under our website with the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, and asking them to pay particular attention to three main reports that are on file in there. One is which is the NIC report of the correction center number one, and that, that kind of kicked things off. Mr. Garnos's inmate population projection and, you know, the inmate bed counts and breakdowns and all of the issues that he identified with maintaining the kind of ratios that you talked about, and that, and then, of course, the, the report that was filed on April 8th by the committee. And that, so, again, we, we are in a position that, uh, we can get out a, an RFP by next week for your approval as an authorization to publish, if that's the route you want to take.
Any other? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I'd agree with Gerald. I, uh, initially thought we probably should just award this and get it done, but, uh, I, citing the fact that you said there were quite a bit of interest and whoever gets, whoever gets this has probably got a, a leg up on, on the, on the final deal, but I'm sure that if we build a brand-new facility somewhere, it's going to take some outside console from other cities that have done prisons, so, uh, in light of that, I'd move that, uh, we do the RFP process.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the RFP process. Is there any other comments?
Madam Chair, I would just say that, you know, with the bids that we get on, on other things, there can be a, a pretty big variance on, on what people, uh, come forward with, you know, whether it's, uh, bridges or financial underwriting. I mean, uh, it's, it's surprising the differences that the bids come in at, and so this is the way to move.
Well, we can get a draft out yet this afternoon for a review by both the Sheriff's Department, the commission, and the advisory committee members, and that, and have them review it. We will, um, incorporate any other suggested changes, but we can be ready for next week.
I've had phone calls from architectural firms too. I'm sure not near as many as Ken has had, but I think it's very important that we let all people have an opportunity to work on this project and don't look like we're funneling it one direction, and it gives everyone a fair shot. So, I have a motion and a second on the table to approve an RFP. Any other comments or questions?
Well, just to reiterate what Gerald said, it is an opportunity to look at some, think outside the box on this thing, and, uh, with the RFP process, I think we do the best job with that.
Let a thousand blossoms bloom.
We have a motion and a second for a thousand blossoms. Now, for an architectural, um, services for Minnehaha County Correctional Facilities. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item twenty-one is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? All right, go on to, is there any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Glad to see our auditor is here because last night, uh, Bob, I got a call from a citizen whose grandmother had gotten the wrong ballot in the Republican primary. And, uh, he was in a quandary what to do about it. His grandmother is 90 years old and had partially marked this ballot that was, didn't notice it. I mean, you get past familiar names, you know, Stace Nelson, Governor Rounds, whatever, and then you get down to the lower stuff, and that's where suddenly it looks different than you expect. So, what's going on?
Uh, it's very, Bob Litz from the auditor's office, very regrettable that I have to be here today, and I am deeply sorry for the mistake. And the mistake that I'm going to tell you, I solely am responsible for that, and I claim responsibility, and will take whatever it, it does to get this fixed. Uh, last Tuesday, after the city election got put away, uh, we, uh, I, I had 21 different ballot styles that I approved getting printed. And, uh, uh, what happened was, and, you know, Kirsten, I have some samples of the ballot. I don't know about showing them on the screen. Can I bring them up there and pass them around, or is that public business due to the sample?
Are they marked as samples?
Yeah. Oh, no, it's not a sample. These are copies of the original ballots itself.
I mean, it's displaying a marked ballot, I believe.
No, okay, all right. Uh, what I would like to-
You're the election officer too, so I believe you can handle it.
I, I think that, I thought that I could, so.
Okay.
Uh, what I would like to show you first is, oh, not that one. This is, this is the Republican ballot that goes out to all Republicans if they do not have any committee races or legislative district races. And, uh, as you can see, down at the bottom here, can, can we magnify that?
Where?
No, this, District 14 down here. As you can see, the District 14 representative showed up on the Republican ballot. The, the correct form of the ballot is without District 14 in it. And the District 14 ballot is exactly like the Republican general ballot. As you can see, the District 14 representatives are on there. They are not supposed to be on the, on the Republican ballot. See, Republican District 14 on the block there, this is a Republican ballot. Republican ballot is the one the mistake was made on, contains District 14 people.
Did all of them?
No, no. I, I ordered a thousand, uh, of that style of absentee ballots. We ordered our absentees first, we got them in, we started absentee balloting, uh, on Friday last week, and we noticed it late Friday afternoon. Uh, so, Monday morning, yesterday morning, we started looking at the fixes and finding out what to do about it. And, uh, in the process, we discovered that we had mailed out 72 ballots to different people. Uh, and we had two people that are walk-ins, uh, that had gotten these ballots too. One of the persons that, uh, walked in noticed it, the other person didn't, we contacted them. What will happen with those ballots is they are voted, they're sealed, they're in the ballot box, they're also noted and marked, and we will have the resolution board recreate those ballots to the right ballot style. Uh, the ones that we sent out, a lot of those were sent out to nursing homes. We've contacted the activities directors and been able to interdict quite a few of them, not all of them. That process was going on as we speak, and I'm not exactly certain where we're at with that. Uh, I have a thousand ballots, uh, the absentee ballots are sitting out at the printer right now. I'd like to be having those doing the fix. However, I felt it, uh, more important to come up here and explain myself to you folks. Uh, along with, what we're going to do with the absentee ballots that we don't get back, that we can't replace, is we are sending a new ballot and a copy of a letter.
You had it for a second.
Yeah, there it is.
Ken?
There's, there's the letter that we sent. It says that we sent you an absentee ballot by error, that, uh, we're printing new ones, and we're going to send it out. Please fill out and return the old one and send us the old one back in a separate envelope, whether voted or not. Know that your old ballot will not be counted, and any questions, please call us at, uh, and then my number and signature is down below there. Like I say, it's a, it's a mistake, it is solely my mistake, nobody else is in this office. It's exceptionally regrettable in view of what happened a couple of weeks ago. I claim responsibility, and I'm here to answer any other questions that we can.
Are there any questions for Bob? Commissioner Barth?
So, Bob, is it just District 14 people or people that were formerly in District 14? Because I believe the person that I heard of was in District 25. And is there no, uh, legislative primary in District 25?
That, that is correct. He, uh, he would have gotten the plain Republican ballot without the District 14 material on there. Uh, that's what he should have had because there's no other races out there other than the standard Republican ballot.
And so is it one neighborhood? Pardon me for carrying on, Madam Chair. Is it just one neighborhood that got, when the redistricting got switched around wrong, or is it, uh?
Actually, what happened was the District 14 legislative candidate showed up on the Republican ballot, but they should only be on the District 14 ballot.
Right. So, the people though that are getting them incorrectly were districted out of 14 and are-
That's correct, yes. It would be the, it would be the standard Republican ballot that could go to anybody that doesn't have any kind of a Republican race other than the governor, the senator, and the nonpartisan, uh, judge's race.
So, it could be anybody, or is it just these former District 14 people?
There wouldn't be the former District 14 people. It would be any Republican that didn't have a race in their, in their district besides the governor, the senator, and the NPA.
So, say, for example, someone in District 25 or District- So, say, for example, someone in District 25 or District 9 might get that?
Yes, they could, yes. We sent out 450 ballots. We dropped that many ballots in the mail Monday morning as per law. We were ready for them, and like I said, 72 of those were sent out the wrong ballot. In talking with other folks, Darlene and the programming of these here, you know, when we programmed, even, even if some of these ballots would happen to have gotten through, when we programmed the ballot readers, they would have only read what was appropriate for that ballot. But we have to, I have to fix this and get it right and take care of these, get the right heading on this ballot.
Commissioner Barth.
So, what would be the process for someone that received this? This person that I talked to, his grandmother had partially marked this ballot. What should he do?
When she, when she marks that ballot, she's going to get the letter here and a new ballot. We want her to put that in that envelope and send it back here, and that will be marked as a spoiled ballot, and then she can fill the new ballot out correctly and mail it back.
So, she sends the old one back to you?
Absolutely.
The one that's wrong, she sends back to you?
Yes.
And she fills out the new one and sends that?
And sends it back. And the old one, like I said, will be treated as a spoiled ballot. We have a way of marking those, the new ones from the older ones. We have track of this downstairs.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Bob, have you instituted any failsafes to prevent this in the future? It's the second time now it's happened.
You know, Commissioner Kelly, the first time I had a partial excuse in that we had some bad information that came up. This time here, it is simply me, and I think that the solution would be to have more eyes and spend more time on these ballots.
So, have you done anything yet, or are you just contemplating?
Well, the rest of them are correct. So, you know, we'll institute those changes when we get to the general election. And we certainly looked at the repaired ballot. You know, everybody, I had a couple other office people look at the repaired ballot once I got that back.
Any other questions? Commissioner?
I'm sorry to pick at the scab here, Bob, but, you know, back in the situation with Rebecca Dunn, there was talk about an investigation of her criminal activity on bringing in this wrong ballot. Where are we at with that investigation?
Absolutely nothing is going to happen with that there. We decided that the, her actions, she was understandably emotional in that day, and that her actions, although they, it just didn't, it just didn't rise to any criminal occasion. It's, it's a small violation of South Dakota Administrative Code, and I just didn't see any, any sense in, in pursuing that. I certainly didn't want to. I thought the matter was closed after she made her statements that day.
Well, the newspaper said that, though, but thank you.
Any other comments? Any other new business? Is there any old business? With that, we could adjourn into executive session for personnel, contract negotiations, and legal briefing.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.